This time I'll call the special call meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our invocation for the board's invocation. And also immediately follow that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Board members, please rise.
Let us pray. Congress heavenly Father, again we come before you tonight, asking for your guidance and your direction. Lord, again, we want to thank you for the many, many blessings you've bestowed upon us and the gift you gave us. Lord, these are tough times, we all understand that. Decisions have to be made that are good for some, not as good for others. And Lord, we do ask your comfort in arms to wrap around us all as we make these decisions. For the education of the children of this county, for our staff making decisions every day. Lord, it's a moving target, and we pray that you help keep us moving along with it. And Lord, we know changes are to be made every day. We know there's more to be asked of by everyone. And we know, Lord, that many have already stood up and they have done these things. And they have gone far beyond and above their normal duties. But Lord, we know, we all are in it for the love and the education of children. Lord, we do pray your guidance and direct us as we make these decisions again, Lord. We will always give you the praise and the glory for all that you've given us. We thank you, we love you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under announcements, we just got one, the next regular board meeting is scheduled for October the 12th here at the Education Center. It seems like we've had meetings behind meetings behind meetings. I think somebody said we had over forty-some odd meetings since COVID hit, so.
It'll be thirty.
But we'll meet when we need to, Dr. Bill. Just let us know and we'll, we'll meet. Any other announcements? I think someone did sign up to address the board under public comments. Let me read the. Now is the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, I'm Danielle Van Hook. And I'm, thank you Chairman Francis, the board, Superintendent Nolte. I do, before we begin, I just want to tell the families of the two people that died this morning in the fire at Evergreen Paper Mill that we are all praying for you, we are with you, and we love you. I'm here tonight on behalf of a group of parents, teachers, educators, retired educators in our community. I have a Facebook page, a personal one, and they're both public. And I asked, when the announcement came out from the governor, like I did with previous announcements from the governor and like I did in July when I came to the meeting, I asked the, the parents and the teachers, you know, would you send your kids to school based on this announcement beginning October 5th, when we are able to send children back on the Plan A 100% of the time for K through five students? And I will, just wanted to let the board know, the resounding, the resounding answer from the public is yes. They want their children back in school, our children need school. And they, they want their children to be back in school as soon as possible. And they are trusting y'all to figure out between now and October 5th, what those safety measures that need to be in place are going to be. Now, I will tell you, there was a vocal, a very vocal minority that did not agree with sending children back to school. And of course, they will still have option C. And so I know y'all are going to do what's right by the kids and do the best thing. I can tell you, I know that Dr. Nolte and Assistant Superintendent Barker and Putnam are going to know the safety measures that need to be put in place. The number, the number one and two questions, and which I would like y'all to ask tonight and get the answers on are masks. With children that young, folks want to know, are they going to be made to wear masks 100% of the time during the day? And how is that going to be possible? And are they even going to have to wear it at PE? And you know, in between bites of their food and drink at lunch, et cetera. They're very, very worried about the K through five and including the special needs children that are going to be going back. And the second issue, of course, is the social distancing. And how are we going to make that work if 100% capacity is going to be allowed? Given the fact that it might be a small percentage that choose option C to stay home, how are we going to have the room to do that if we have to space everybody six feet away? And so the, the, sort of the legal question, I'm a lawyer, so I'm framing it legally, is what is minimum social distancing requirements? What distancing requirements? What is the definition of that? Because that is what y'all are going to be allowed to do on October 5th. So to determine what that means, what the definition of that is, and whether we can do that safely for the kids. But overwhelmingly, the public, the parents of these children and the teachers. Now, there are some teachers that are very vocal, and, and, and I think y'all are dealing with that in a separate issue. Only, only a handful of teachers have contacted me worried about this. The vast majority are also parents and they're ready to get back. But they know that y'all are going to do the right thing and we're hoping and praying that you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No one else has signed up to address the board? Okay, thank you. Are there any agenda adjustments? Okay, at this time, we'll move on to number six.
Mr. Chairman, I have to make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. I hear a second, say Ms. Barrett. Any question or comments before we vote? There being them, we'll vote all those first.
Aye.
We do have Mr. Burnett with us tonight. I apologize for not recognizing that early. Mr. Burnett is meeting with us virtually, and he voted in the affirmative, is that correct, David?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard you say. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay, turn it over now to our staff.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests. If I could take a little privilege, Mr. Chairman, just to mention our friend Leanne Moody. Just to give the board an update. Leanne has shared with a lot of us that she got the flu sometime back. And she, because of that, and again, this is big information she's shared with a lot of people, so I believe I can share it. She contracted a nervous system disorder that is sometimes accompanied with the flu. It's pretty rare, but she's experiencing that. She's been in the hospital. Her condition is pretty serious. She's in good spirits, though. I spoke with Leanna and her son Josh this morning on the phone and told her that she needed to let us worry about work and she needed to get well. And then she started asking me questions about work and I told her to stop. But we just want everyone to keep Leanna in your thoughts and prayers. Her long-term progress, or prognosis rather, Josh and Leanna both told me was good, but it might be a long-term process for her to get completely back on her feet. So I wanted to share that with you and ask everyone to keep her in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Dr. Bill.
Looking for my glasses, sorry.
Right there they are.
I can talk without them, but I can't read without them. So if you'll indulge me, just a few introductory comments. And you all know that I rarely stand up here and complain, but we have had some frustrations lately. And I wanted to just make a few comments. And then after that, there seem to be three viable options related to what we should do with all of our students and schools based upon the governor's last announcement. So just, just a few initial comments, and then I'll go over those viable options with pros and cons. And then we have a number of people here who can add to the details of these plans and ideas and answer questions. But so just as a way of a summary for people who may be listening in that haven't heard all of our discussion all along the way. Last week, Governor Cooper authorized Plan A, which is all elementary K-5 students coming back every day. The social distancing is recommended at that age group, but not required. You can be closer than six feet under that plan, and you would need to be closer than six feet or they would not fit into the building. Yes, sir.
Given that statement right there, does, what's the parameter for that? Is it for six feet, under six feet all day long? What is the minimum?
They have not given us a minimum. They have recommended the six feet. We've had people talk about other distances, certainly three feet is one of the things that has been mentioned. But there are, there are no requirements. And frankly, you can't fit 20-plus students in a room and maintain six feet. The mask requirements stay in place on, on Plan A or Plan B. And there are very few medical exceptions, and we would have doctors give those to us. But the governor did make that announcement for K-5. But not for middle schools and high schools. There's been no relief there at all. Middle schools and high schools can do Plan B, which we have, which we have planned for extensively and think we can do.
So just, just to clarify, does that mean we space out as best as possible in a classroom? And then you go from there? Or, I mean, I'm assuming that's what it means. If you get, in this classroom, if you can get three feet, in this classroom, you can get four, even better?
Yes, sir.
Is that what, is that what it all boils down to?
They did not give us directions that were that good, okay? All right. They said six feet is required for Plan B. Plan A, there are still all the precautions that we've talked about. Temperature screening, answering questions coming in the door, all of those kinds of things. Six-foot separation for Plan B, no social distance required for Plan A. So that was pretty frustrating for us. I spent about 20 minutes on the phone on Friday with Jeff Coltrane. He is the governor's education advisor. He was a nice man. He actually picked up the phone when I called and talked to him for about 20 minutes. Very nice, professional guy. But there does not seem to be any wiggle room on everyone going on Plan A. One of the things that has been frustrating for us as we have done our planning, we have spent a lot of time planning to do option C, and we've done it pretty well since school started. We spent a lot of time planning for option B, and we think we can do that when, when we're ready. We said we, at the last meeting, we would do that by the 28th. We spent some time planning for option A. What we have not done, and is a little frustrating, is plan for the governor to give us two plans at once. One plan for half of our students and the other plan for the other half of our students. So Mr. Coltrane did tell me that he did not expect a change for middle and high schools in the short term. That does not mean that the governor couldn't come, come out tomorrow and make that change. But to his knowledge, he did not expect that in the short term. Part of the frustration is, is that our people have worked really, really hard since last March. We have fed people, we have done good remote instruction, we have planned for, and we're prepared to implement Plan B, and we have done some planning for Plan A. But what we did not expect was Plan A and Plan B to be given to us at the same time for different schools. And it is my personal belief that we had, would be much better off had we been given one or the other instead of both at the same time. So anyway, that's enough of my introductory comments. With the directions that we have been given, I've talked to a lot of people since the governor's announcement. It seems that there are three viable options for moving the school system forward. And I want to talk to you all about those. You see several staff members here, Dr. Putnam, Mrs. Barker, I think some others are logged in. We might be able to get questions from, answered from them if we need to. And so I want to go over those options. I want to remind everyone, because I don't want anyone to forget, that for the remainder of the year, anyone who wants a remote-only option can have that. That is part of the state requirement. So I'm going to not talk a lot about that tonight, because that's not the question in hand. The remote-only option is there. The question at hand, at hand is, now what do we do with half of our schools having the capacity to go to B? A weekly A-B rotation is what we've planned for, or go to A by October the 5th. So I've given you some notes, I've already found one typo in my notes, and that's my responsibility, because I typed those earlier today. But viable option one is since we have planned exclusively to enter Plan B on September the 28th, that's next Monday, we could do that kindergarten through high school. Okay, just one of the options. This would need to be done in two-week increments, because it's a two-week rotation. So you could do it for two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks, or. I wouldn't want, personally wouldn't want to do it too long, but we could, if, if that's what we chose to do. But you could do that. The pros for that, I think, are pretty extensive. First, we plan to do this. And because we plan to do it, it will probably go pretty well. Usually in Haywood County schools, if we take the time with large groups of number and plan to do something, it usually goes pretty well. The other good thing about doing that, which is what we had planned to do before the governor's last announcement, is we would put siblings on the same weekly rotation, and that would help their parents, many of their parents, with school age childcare. If we chose this viable option one, it would get in-person learning going for everyone, which, and we believe that in-person is better than virtual, especially when you're talking about lots of students over the long run. And then the other pro is the fact that we have not had any in-person learning since last March. We have done a lot of planning regarding temperature checks and providing hand sanitizer. And we've marked a lot of our floors, and we've labeled our desks six feet apart. And we've done all of those things. And if, if you all were to select option A, it would give us an opportunity to vet all that planning and make sure it works with half the students in the school, rather than all of the students in the school. The cons for option A is that elementary students would not be able to attend every day while we were using this model. It would delay them going every day. That's a con, it's a big healthcare concern, especially for elementary parents. The other con is this would cause some of our elementary schools to have multiple schedules and assignments in a short period of time. So imagine this, they're all remote now, you go B for a couple of weeks, and then you go A. So literally, that would be a, a lot of shuffling around and some student assignments changing for some students. So before, do you want me to go through all three, Mr. Chairman, and then do questions? Or you want us to do questions on each one? Maybe do all, do all three?
Let's just do all three, and if you have a question, just ask.
Let me do all three, and then I'll sit down and we'll just have whatever kind of discussion we need to have here. Viable option two, which we think, you know, all of these will work. The question is which one's better right now for us. Viable option two would be to start the elementary schools on Plan A October the 5th. That's as soon as you could do it, anyway. And just be ready to take all of them back in person every day with the safeguards described, described in the state manual for that. And to also start middle schools and high schools on Plan B on the same day. Okay, so let me talk about the pros and cons of that. You're doing it on the same day. High schools and middle schools going to be staying remote until then. Elementary staying remote until the 5th and starting. So the pros is, are, the pros are, this allows elementary students to attend every day as soon as possible. That's a pro to that one. Another pro is this helps parents with childcare concerns for K-5 school age children by staying all remote until they can all go. Those are two pretty big pros for that one. And then the biggest con for that one is this delays middle school and high school students from going to Plan B and that weekly rotation for another week. And then.
If the kids were on Plan B, that would almost put the, I mean, like the, you have the A week and the B week. So the B week kids would be, it'd almost be three weeks before they could get back in under that plan, correct?
It would be, they would be the second week.
We've got two weeks until October, and then October 5th, and then it would be another week after that. So they're waiting three weeks.
That's correct. Yeah. Okay. None of these plans are what we want, you know? I think most of the surveys, if you look at parent surveys and even some of the early surveys we did, I think a lot of people want A. It would just have not been provided that yet for all students. So viable option three is to start, to start middle schools and high schools on Plan B on September the 28th, next Monday, when we had planned to do that. All right? And then to start elementary schools on Plan A on October the 5th, which is the first allowable start date. I know there's been probably, the whole community's probably thought of all these options, but these do seem to be the three most viable. The pro to that one is this allows middle schools and high schools to get to Plan B as we have scheduled it, when we planned it. And it allows elementary students to get on Plan A as soon as the state allows. That's the pro. The con is this causes a pretty significant childcare issue the week of the 28th. That one week. Because what's going on that week, on the 28th, is middle schools and high schools have started. Half the kids are there in person. And elementary students aren't going full-time until a week later. And so all of those families that have a K-5 student who currently may be getting babysat or watched by a middle school student or a high school student, that's not available. So those are the three viable plans. And certainly, there may be a better one that we come up with tonight. But those are the plans and what we think the primary benefits are, or problems are. So I know you'll have questions probably for all of us. If it's okay, I'll just have a seat, and then we'll just take turns answering the questions as they come up. Is that okay? Thank you very much, board and listeners.
I've got one question on option three. Do we have a, a number, kind of, how many people are going to be hurting on childcare? Do we have, is it just a rough feel for it, or?
We met, as you all know, we have met with principals and some of the assistant principals and lead teachers. We've been in those meetings frequently. We've not always met with teachers, because they're, they're teaching, you know? They're doing remote instruction, the, most of the teachers. One of the, and some schools talked about that more than other. Some schools are worried about that more than others. One example that came from Bethel Middle School, they told us a number, I think it was 120-something, that 120 of their students had a sibling, and the vast majority of those siblings were younger. So, you know, that was a hard and fast number. We've not gone back and actually done that at every school. These smart people to my left have handed me the last remote surveys. These are siblings related to bus transportation. Is that correct? All right. So Bethel Middle, 294 with a sibling. Well, that was a bigger number than I remembered, but right here in the survey data. The data's better than my memory, obviously. 144 wanted bus transportation. Clyde had 267 students with siblings. That doesn't mean that they're automatically high school or middle school. 258 at Hazelwood, 198 at Johnson Valley, 201 at Junealuska, 98 at Metta Brook, 158 at North Canton, 118 at Riverbend. The middle school, 196, um, excuse me, 1, excuse me, 164, I've got those with a sibling, at Canton Middle, 293 with a sibling, at Waynesville Middle, 349 with a sibling, at Central Haywood High School, 14 with a sibling. Haywood Early College, 60. And they're all remote now because of the college action, so that's probably not a number that had an impact. Pisgah High School, 382 with siblings. Tuscola High School, 321 with siblings. So again, we have not sorted how many were K-5. But pretty big numbers.
There's still no way to really quantify what significant means when it comes, when it's related to school age childcare provided by siblings. I mean, that's, that's almost a question you have to ask to really get a number. You can't assume anything by.
Well, and, and again, I'm going to try not to complain a lot during this meeting. That was the frustration from, from the governor saying, yeah, half of them can go Plan A. Because what we had been told and what we had imagined was, on this date, whatever date the governor decided, they'd all just go Plan A, and we wouldn't have to be worrying about older ones watching the younger ones as much.
Is there any way that we could do, I guess, if, if the childcare issue was a problem, let those siblings in middle school, high school, whatever it might be, delay two weeks? So like, give them a waiver of, or is it, do we need to start everybody at the same time just for, you know, busing issues? Or is that going to be too much of a problem to?
Well, I think the short answer is we wouldn't penalize anyone if we knew that's what they were doing the first week or two, certainly. But they, they would not be getting that in-person, that in-person learning. It will, it will be, unless we take the time to find out exactly what all that is. And that would take some time. Unless we take the time to do that, I imagine that would be, right, confusing, and maybe even frustrating for some of our families.
Well, unless I'm just missing it. The middle and high school students would start on Plan B on September the 28th. And I'm assuming the A group would go first. So the only ones affected for that one week would be those that are in A group. Um, so the only ones affected for that one week would be those that are in A group that has to take care of. So now your numbers got cut way down.
About half of them.
Um, cause B, B week, everybody, assuming that you went with option three. Then B week, everybody's on the same, everything's evened out at that point. So really we're looking at one week that.
Maybe do a waiver for that week?
If, if there was significant childcare issues that, that there was no other way to attend. He- here's the only question I've got, and, and by the way, I think all three of these options are really good and viable options. Um, the, um, of, of course, the most, uh, aggressive is option three. Uh, where you're getting everybody back as soon as possible to the extent that they're allowed by the governor's mandate. Uh, the only question I have is on, on option three. Is we, we have had teachers in elementary schools preparing for an A D. And, uh, and I know the teachers have worked extremely hard to accomplish and get ready for that. My, I, I guess my question is, if we go with option three. Or if we go with option, make sure I get this right. Two, to some extent. We, we may wanna give some real consideration to a workday in there for those elementary school teachers. Prior to this, because now instead of prepping for half the students, they're gonna be getting hit with all the students. And I would imagine they spent a lot of time in their off hours setting up classrooms and, um, and, and doing all that thing, that stuff, now they're gonna have to move things around to maximize social distancing. So, I, I, I don't know that we don't have to figure out a workday in there for them. Rather than expecting them to do it after school and on Saturdays. And dragging their husbands into.
Well, I, I'd just say our people have done stuff like that since March and they are to be commended.
Absolutely.
They, they, they've done, um, uh, and we're just, we're proud of them. So I, I, you know, uh, to me, if that's something we wanted to do, we could certainly do it, we lose that day. But in the long run, since they're all coming back, it might be something that the community would understand.
I, I, I just feel like, we, we've asked our teachers to do so much. And they have, and, and a lot of it's been on the wrong time and at the wrong, on the wrong dime. And, uh, we, we may want to, uh, recognize that by saying, uh, we're, we're gonna take a day and let y'all get prepared, uh, during normal hours. Rather than expecting you to jump through one last fiery hoop before we start up. That's, that's really my only thought on, on any of those options. I, I let everybody else ask questions before I, 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 I give you my opinion of where I'm at, but I don't wanna jump right ahead, so.
Anybody else got questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Jimmy.
Uh, you might steal my thunder, so.
Right, I'm gonna let you go first then.
Doesn't matter, uh. Yeah, my only thoughts is, is like Dr. Rogers kinda mentioned, these teachers, they've gone through a lot already to plan for this section. Now we're throwing something, I say, okay, let's throw this plan out, which, we know that's happened already, thanks to our governor and the pandemic. And everything else, we can't blame anybody particularly, it just happened. And, uh, they have, I do applaud them for taking these extra hours. And I know there's even extra hours that they may have to be schooled earlier, they may have to stay later due to all the busing and everything, getting students in and out of the school buildings. Uh, we know that's gonna be a situation, uh, we know it, it, it's already been mentioned by several emails and comments I've had. And by the way, I would like to thank all those who have emailed us and appreciate their comments and thoughts, cause we don't know unless we hear them. Um, it's making sure these teachers are well informed, that's been a concern of mine, making sure they do hear. If that word is transferred back from the principals' meetings, back down the ladder, back to the teachers and that they have their input in it. And I know they've had their input and we, we've asked for that and I'm, I'm hoping we're getting it, we've taken it into consideration. Uh, I would like to see, like you say, if it is option three, that, that one week at least, that's narrative's down son. As far as the, the childcare from older siblings taking care of other siblings, et cetera, uh, that is helpful, um. I don't really know if there's a question at this time, uh. Did everything on October the fifth, say if it wasn't allowed, if we had to move it up, something there, then. Uh, like in viable option one, that'd be moving it up to like October twelfth, before we could even go, that'd be the first week, is that right? On the viable option one?
Uh, ye- yes, sir, that, that's, uh.
Moving all the way up to October twelfth, so there's nothing.
That's the, that's the beauty and the ugliness of the three viable options, none of them are perfect. And we, we, uh, and again, I'll, I'll just say this one more time, then I won't say it anymore. We'd have been a lot better off if we'd just gotten B or A, not half of both. But yeah, there are, there are certainly downsides to all three of these plans and some real positives. You know, to all three of the plans, the, um, and again, I can go over them again, you know, what those positives are and the negatives. But, um, it's, it's not, uh, as clear, uh, a answer. As some of the previous things that we've had to make decisions on.
Okay.
We'll make all three of them work though.
Mr. Burnett, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I had a time, I had time to review all the options this afternoon.
Okay. I've got, I guess, a few here. First of all, I'll just say, right out of the gate, I mean, obviously I've been for the kids getting back in school. Since all this started, so, I mean, my option, to me, the best option for Haywood. What I think would be for the kids would be option three. I mean, you're pretty much starting Plan B like we have already voted on. And then Plan A, October fifth, when they're letting all the elementary kids go back. That's, I mean, that's the option that I feel like we need to go ahead and go with. But in saying that, I've got a few other things. First of all, we hadn't really talked about buses, bus load in amongst much of this stuff. Cause right now, if we go back to Plan A, all little elementary kids on, your bus situation has not changed. They're still just allowing so many people on the bus.
Yeah, Dr. Putnam has a good plan for that, I'll let him tell you about that, he's worked on it.
Under Plan B, we have, um, we're able to accommodate everybody with the six feet of, uh, or actually, it's not six feet. It's every seat, um, students can occupy every seat, sixty-six passenger bus, twenty-two seats. Three per seat, um, and how you have to allocate that is one student per seat. Uh, they do have to wear their mask, there is not six feet of space, if you think about the child right behind a seat. The distance for them to the person sitting in front of them is not six feet, uh, at best three feet. Uh, but that's, uh, the current guidance that we've been provided for bus transportation. Uh, we have sorted all kids, um, that are s- siblings so that they can ride together. We have sorted all kids who live in a common cottage at Broihill. And we have sorted all kids who may be homeless, multifamily, uh, occupancy in a single home. And so, um, our, our principals and assistant principals done a good job identifying those unique situations. Uh, so that we can increase our capacity on the bus. That said, um, having, i- it has not been planned for, for Plan A. Okay, Plan A means, uh, kids can sit side by side whether they live together or not. Um, they can, you can put as many as you want on there for elementary. So you, you, at that point, you're looking at seventy-five percent capacity. Fifty percent of which is every elementary age kid you have. Fifty percent of middle school and fifty percent of high school. So i- i- if you take half of that secondary population. And all of elementary, you're at seventy-five percent occupancy on that bus. And, uh, what the current guidance says in regard to distancing on the bus for elementary age. Plan B guidance is recommended, highly strongly recommended. And for Plan B students in the secondary level, it's required. So.
You wanna talk?
After we, after we got a pretty good plan for Plan B.
And they throw Plan A.
They throw Plan A and it, 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 it makes it much more complicated. I'm not saying we can't figure it out, but.
I guess I should ask that question later.
I was, I was, on, on the buses, there's, you know, several buses, the elementary, middle school, high school, they share. So would the requirements, because there's middle school and high school riding it? Um, would the Plan B requirements be there, even though there's some elementary on there? Or are they gonna sit three elementary kids in the front row and then the high school or middle school sit in the back one by one, or how is that gonna work? Or do we know?
So, uh, the schools that we've identified where middle school and elementary or high school coexist on the same bus or share buses. We only have one school that is in that situation, and that's Bethel Elementary and Bethel Middle, they share buses. Uh, but it's a legitimate thing to work through. Um, and again, we started working through that on Friday, just as quickly as we knew. Uh, but we're just not there yet. We don't know, um, uh, in, in looking and thinking about that, we do have overlap or duplicate where Pisgah will run a route. Uh, picking up Canton Middle and Pisgah kids along the same route that Bethel Middle, Bethel Elementary will run a route. So they, they do overlap on routes. Getting all of those kids sorted to where they will fit is gonna take just a little bit of time.
With, i- i- if my memory's right, and it's not, but I, I remember somewhere around seventeen hundred kids. Was the number on bus riders?
I'll pull it up here.
He's got that on that survey he showed.
Which was sort of.
Uh, two thousand twenty-four need bus transportation.
Two thousand twenty-four. And that, and that compared to normal?
Uh, that is exceedingly high compared to neighboring counties. Jackson County's average daily bus ridership is a hundred and fifty-six, and ours is at two thousand twenty-four.
That's, uh, that's about two-thirds of our normal.
Two-thirds of normal.
Oh, you're talking about for our operation, I gotcha.
About two-thirds.
Yeah, um, well, that's rough, yeah, it, it's roughly a third. Normally we have about two-thirds, uh, folks that ride the bus, and so we've got approximately a third.
Did you say that siblings, they can ride on the same seat regardless of the restrictions, correct?
That's correct.
Family, right?
Correct.
Okay, you may have said that, but I just didn't get it in my head.
Right, and to include Broihill.
Is this a showstopper, or is this something you can work through?
I, I don't think it's a showstopper, I, I do think it's just something that will take a little bit of time, uh, when you start sorting through Hungry Creek and Harley Creek and.
What about this, time is, can you do it by October the fifth, I guess is the question?
I, oh, certainly by October fifth.
Okay.
Yes, definitely by October fifth. Um, it, a- again, it's looking at each kid, each household by route. That needs transportation and where each of our buses run.
Godspeed.
But did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I just was wanting to make sure that you throw, you, you threw that out there to let everybody know that that's something that is always being worked on. Even though we're working on trying to the schools, the bus route is hand to hand. So all that, it sounds like you've, you guys all have done what I wouldn't want to treat that way. I think we have an easy job, we just have to vote and tell you what to do and then you just gonna do it.
And I have to give credit to the principals and assistant.
Yes, principal, right.
They've done a fantastic job.
The two other things that I have is now, Plan A, if we go back to Plan, if we go with three. Plan B and then Plan A for all the elementary kids go back in face. Now they still, some of the kids that stay home still will be online. Now they still have an option, a week, two weeks, three weeks, if the parents, they decide, okay, I'm going back into the classroom. Or they don't go back or.
Yeah, what, what we've told them is, is we would like for them to declare in the first two weeks. Try, try both things, watch both things, and then after, and we'll do it automatically. Anybody asks the first two weeks, we'll, we'll make an automatic transfer. After the first two weeks, we'd like the principal to work with the family on a case by case basis. Because, because there may be space issues with Plan B, because you do have to keep them six feet apart in a room. And if they're in biology and all the biology rooms are already packed at six feet apart. We might still be able to figure it out for most of their courses, but it might be a problem and we can't do it.
Well, is that something that the, in the governor's orders that he's not leaving that up to the school system? Are they any possible way that as a school system, we can say, okay, after two weeks? You can't come back until December if you wanna do online, or is that any kind of waiver at all besides a case by case?
Now, the two, the two weeks is our administrative recommendation to bring along stabilization, but it would be two weeks automatically.
Right.
And then after the two weeks, we'd like them to work, to talk to the principal and let the principal decide on a case by case basis. Coming from remote to in-person on Plan A for elementary, easier, much easier. We still have some remote kids that will need to be taught, and if all of them do it, then we're gonna have to reassign a few students. Because teachers have some all remote students, some of them do. Uh, going from, um, so that's easier from all remote to in-person. It, with the elementary, with the high schools, if we're still on Plan B and with the middle school, you think about the size of Canton Middle School's classrooms. And keeping six feet apart. If they transition or want to transition from all remote to in-person and the governor still has us at Plan B. It ma- they might not fit.
Okay.
Because we've gotta main, we're being required to maintain six feet with Plan B.
So it boils down to the, if we're still on Plan B, somebody that's remote wanting to come in, we may not have the space. So they'll just have to stay on remote until the space comes available.
We had logistics.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to honor them all the first couple of weeks if possible, cause we don't think we'll have that many the first couple of weeks. Now people out there listening are going, well, I'm gonna go ahead and do it for the first couple of weeks, but we'd like to really honor them if we can.
Yeah, right.
And then after, after it gets full, or certainly after two weeks, we may have to say, there's literally not moved room. Can you convince the governor to go ahead and give us A for our big children?
Okay, one more thing, since we have brought that up about online, some of your schools. Obviously, they've got, we'll just throw our example, they've got four teachers in first grade. Okay, you've got enough to have three in face and then one's gonna do online the whole time.
Right.
So let's say that they broke them up twenty, 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 online has.
Twenty.
Well, let's say the online has thirty. Let's say that that's how they figured it out, they had thirty kids that said, okay, I wanna do online. So now we've got one teacher that's doing thirty, three that's doing twenty.
Yeah, the, the, the largest number of elementary students in one grade level. That won't all remote is twenty-two.
Okay.
And that's at North Canton.
It's at North Canton.
And then we actually had one grade level at one school where they had one fifth grader that wanted all remote. So we're, we don't anticipate at the elementary level really wacky numbers. Uh, some of them would be done by a regular teacher, some of them might be done by a title one specialist. And that all depends on the funding of the. And that all depends on the funding of the school and how they've organized and I think I gave y'all a. Breakdown. I hate to call it a cheat sheet during a special board meeting, but I think we gave you a cheat sheet with one or two sentences about each school and they're doing.
Doing right.
Something like this and they're doing something like.
Now, wouldn't that, that sheet that you gave us, wouldn't that change if all the kids come back? Because now they may have to pull some of those teachers to go back to a full classroom.
Well, it's, it, we talked about elementary here.
And, yes.
Yeah, well, here's what we're, uh there are a couple of schools, uh one in particular. That won't have a lot of problem if a hundred percent came back because the way they had organized and the way that they had planned. Most of those um people who are coming back are being taught by a title-one specialist. And they could just come back and go in a, in one of the homerooms or in their original homeroom. We also have a couple of designs, and Jill, you probably, Mrs. Barker, you probably ought to talk about this cuz you did all this work. But we also have some designs where they, they would come back to the remote-only teacher's room. And they might have a blend of students for a little while. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, you were doing good, so to answer your question. Um I'm looking at all the elementary schools and Kim and I met with them again today, Kim Shipman, and just to make sure and go through their plans. They had, they were ready to go with the A B plan. It does look a little different than the all-remote, but the principals knew that the all-remote plan was something that was probably coming, so they were trying to do all that at once if they could. So I called each one of them today and I said, how do y'all feel? Um and sure, I wanna talk to all of them, how do you feel about that, you know, do you feel? There'll be a few tweaks within each one, but they were ready to go with those plans, it's very different at every school. Like Dr. Bill said, if you had hired full-time people in your title-one program, those, and they're certified teachers that you've just taken out of the classroom, they may be. A great remote option for you, whereas if you have a lot of retired part-time people at your school, that might not have been an option. So it has been piecemeal, they have worked really, really hard, it's been very difficult. Um for them, we met with them Friday for several hours and I know uh many of them will continue to work on it, but I could go into the details of each one if y'all wanna know, but. That's basically what it looks like, every grade level is different. You know, at Junealuska, um the way they had their third grade numbers were high for remote, they have one teacher, they had a fifth. Third grade teacher, that one teacher is gonna be able to do the third grade. Um but those have been hard conversations and I want our teachers to know out there, we know that's tough, um. It's been tough to sign up to do something that you felt like you want the kids in and, and it's just been hard all the way around for principals to try to make this, but. Trying to honor the online option that the governor, you know, we've had to, we'll have to make some changes, there'll be some class moves. And we told our principals early on, please tell the families, you know, that if we get to come back in person, we'll try very hard to make it. Um it's pain, you know, not as painful, but there's gonna be some changes. So we, the plans are here for the elementary schools and they said to just say, I asked him, you know, what would you want me to tell the board? Are you ready, are you, and they just, I think where they are is what um Mr. Rogers said and, and Dr. Rogers talked about jumping through a hoop, just tell us. What it is and let's go, you know, I think that's where our principals are right now. Um we just want to know, and they were ready until the governor's announcement, so it's nothing to do with you, but that's where they are, just tell us what to do and we're ready.
One, I'm, no, I'm, I'm, I'm getting ready, getting done and I know this is gonna surprise y'uns all, just for a second. Once again, like I said last meeting, I want to just thank y'uns all, what y'uns have done. All the way down to the custodians, teachers, cafeteria workers, everybody. I mean, the, the whole Haywood County schools, you cannot ask for a better bunch of people that we've got. That runs us, run the schools all the way down to the maintenance, it's doing everything, I mean, y'uns have, y'uns have all done great. Governor keeps a throwing it, y'uns just keep a taking it and saying, okay, whap, whap, we'll, we'll make it work. I mean, I, I really greatly appreciate everything that y'uns do. And then I'm gonna turn towards Mr. Francis, Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Been on this board for a good while. I would just like to say, I appreciate what you've done since you've been chairman of this board. That you have kept us all in the loop. When things get heated, everything else, we all know that we've, we've all had our beef. I just wanna say to you and this board, to every one of y'uns, I greatly appreciate this board is as open as it is. We try to do everything out and open, now obviously, they are saying things that just can't get out of closed session, we all know that, public knows that. I would just want to say, I greatly appreciate that they ain't really no backbiting or anything on this board, we have always worked good. For one common goal, and that is for the students of Haywood County. I'd just like to say that.
Well, thank you, sir, for the kind comments, but I think it's been a group effort from everybody. Our administration's been very good about communicating with us and, and so I appreciate that as well and thanks. I like to say thank you to all the board members as well, I mean, we've met a lot. And uh but, you know, extraordinary times, call for extraordinary things. But thank you. Any other questions?
I, I do have a follow-up on going back to using this, going back to elementary schools. And um a lot of schools using their title-one teachers to do the remote learning and stuff. How is that gonna affect the kids in their, that are in person in the classrooms? That need that extra assistance uh that they would normally be getting from those teachers, but now they're not able to give that because they're doing remote learning.
And I think that depends too, on different models and different schools, a good thing is, Mr. Francis is, at Junealuska, they also have a lot of part-time people too. So they do have one full-time person, for example, at Junealuska, I'm using them, they have a, a part-time administrator, Kiffin Queen is half-time title-one, then they have several retired people. So that will be pieced together just along those lines, and also if you remember, most of our remote schedules for elementary kids, we don't have them behind a computer from nine until. Three, so a lot of their assignments could be done, they could see another group of kids, it's, it looks different in every school. Um but yeah, that has been, that has been a concern too, just thinking about that part of reme-, I had that conversation with the principal today. You know, just about the remediation, but also, you know, I know what Dr. Nolte has said. That's why these numbers are so important for parents those first ten days, so we can kinda get that right to make sure those remediation plans can be in place too. On the A B, that was one benefit, and I mean, it wasn't really listed there, so those classrooms would have been, you know. They are smaller, so the teacher would be able to.
Or one-on-one.
Yes.
And I think that's very important right now with our kids, especially since it's been six months since they've been in classrooms and, and. Um you know, to get them back in, and if you got your classroom full of kids right now, it's hard to give them that one-on-one, especially those kids that need that remediation. If those other teachers that typically do that are tied up doing other things.
Well, and I, I'm gonna speak for Kim Shipman, she'll be so proud of me, because she's been saying the whole time, this is the power of a, a P L C, a professional learning community more than ever. These grade levels that plan together, it's like Trevor said, it's gonna be a Disney World approach, it's gonna look different when they come back, they don't have, have to help each other out with each other's kids. That remediation in the past, the way we've always done it, might not be able to be done that way, but they're gonna have to do it, you know, and so just trying to figure that out. They've got different models, different groups, um some schools, and they're gonna rotate the kids through. You know, and they're gonna have different, this per, this teacher may be the math instructor, this person's gonna be the science and social studies. And they um will have some small groups in the afternoon based on that, so it just looks, it's just gonna look very different, but they know, they're concerned about that and that's a big. That's a big worry, but a good thing about, another thing about A and B. Um but. There are pros and cons to each one.
Yep. Any other questions? Well, the next item on our agenda is if we're gonna take action or not, or come up with a different plan than what we've already got in place.
I would like to go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and just make a motion that we start with uh option three that has been given to us. By the superintendent, the options to go through, and I feel like option three is the one that. I would like to see implemented.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, second of Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any question or comments on the motion on the floor?
Only thing I'd ask is, again, we may wanna amend it to include that workday. We may want to inclu-, amend it to include a workday.
Okay.
Or we may not even have to.
Well, let uh, after you all vote, let us talk to you about what you voted on, we'll, and that'll be one of the things. Okay?
The only comment I've got is, I, 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 I think we all wanna get the kids in school as quickly as possible, and I know option three does that. But as far as parents, the, the biggest, I think option two would be better for the parents. As far as getting all the kids on the same schedule, it'd be all starting at the same time. It'd be less of a headache for parents and teachers as far as that goes.
But then you're delaying them getting back.
And you're delaying one week.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I know, that's the thing, and we all, I believe we're all. We got the same goal, we want them back in there, but I want it to be good for everybody.
I understand, I understand.
What are the extra safety precautions that you were talking about on Plan A for elementary? It sounds like there's still a lot of unknowns in Plan A. Um I mean, really and truthfully, the quickest way to get all kids back in school may be option one, cuz they're all getting back the soonest. And probably maybe one of the safest ways as well, until we see how things go, we've planned for it. Um we're ready to do that option, and then we can always.
Talk to them about the safety.
But the safety issue has come up several things, it's, it's sometimes with having those kids more compact in those classrooms and. And the busing issue that we've talked about, discussed earlier as well.
Yeah, um and again, we've started working on those as quickly as we possibly could, but I'll give you a for example. So the current guidance says you cannot put a mask and you should not put a mask on any child or anyone who is incapacitated or unconscious. Think about kindergarten naptime. You do not have room or six feet of spacing, nor are you being required to provide it, and you're not putting a mask on them. Well, the three things that we've been told over and over that protect folks, six feet of space. No greater than fifteen minutes protected or wearing a mask. Just eliminated all three, naptime lasts for about thirty minutes, you do not have the space. And you cannot put a mask on them because they're unconscious or in a state of unconsciousness while they rest. So um you think, you begin to think through that, well, I'll take half the class out and leave half the class in. Well, I know me as a kindergartner, you're taking half the kids out to play, you're not gonna get me to rest.
Right.
I'm thinking about, I wanna go with them, I'll just skip naptime.
Exactly.
Uh it helps to have been a precocious boy, but um. All those things have to be thought through, and that's just naptime, I've only named naptime.
Right. I mean, I know we all wanna get the kids back as quickly as we can, but we gotta, we gotta think through it, you know, and make sure we're doing it the safest way as well.
Did, did that answer your question?
There's other, there's other safety concerns that's gonna pop up, in other words, that we're, that we need to consider.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other question or comments?
Call for vote.
We have a call for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
David, how did you vote?
Yay.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have s- six, four, one opposed to option three.
Two opposed.
Oh, was you against it too, Larry, I'm sorry. Larry and Jim, I'm sorry, Mr. Henson and Mr. Francis are opposed, motion carries. Now, any other comments, questions? Uh the workday, uh if you would give us the latitude to assign that and let us talk uh tomorrow. Off the top of my head, probably uh the last remote-only day uh before the return to B or A. Um that's a, don't write that down out there, media or people, that's a first thought, but if the board would give us the latitude to assign that day. It's a calendar change, I do think you need to, well, yeah, it's not part of the snow calendar, you may want to, to vote.
We have changed the calendar after the fact in the past due to like snow days. So I would say that, you know, without objection, does anybody have any objection to the superintendent setting the date and then we can vote on it later?
I'm gonna agree.
We've given him authority under emergency circumstances to do a lot of things, and this is one of them.
Yes, sir, that's gonna end one of these days, I hope, when COVID's dawned.
Will this be for all teachers?
That's what I understood from the earlier comments, that you would do it with both groups before they started whatever uh the in-person.
I was specifically thinking of.
Because we just, we just maybe to go ahead and start school on the twenty-eighth. So that's gonna put your high school and middle school.
We'd have to do theirs.
A workday or no workday?
We'd probably have to do Friday.
Do theirs one time and do one.
Probably do, call it a mandatory workday this Friday and then elementary's the Friday before the fifth.
That'd be.
That's again, off the top of my head, I'd like to confer.
Needed or where it's needed.
Like to confer with my people before we settle on that.
I agree with the superintendent, and I think his board's agreed to give the latitude to change those, to do what you need to do on the calendar. Uh and also, I'd just like to state why I think uh Mr. Jim Francis over here said that. Even it, since we are starting back, it's, we voted elementary, middle, and high schools going back A group on the twenty-eighth. That if you've got some kids in there that's in that A group, that need to take care of their kid or take care of their elementary kids. That we've got to make sure that we somehow don't overlook them and say, okay, they're automatically out because they was not here. That we've got to look in that situation, we need to help everybody out.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Yeah, a- absolutely, we've, we've spent a lot of time talking to principals and assistant principals and some teachers about. Uh in, in particular in COVID, um about coding attendance uh is important, but it should be less important than some other things right now.
Well, according to what you'd said earlier, they get the viable option of, of doing remote learning the first two weeks and then declaring.
That's right. That's a good point, that's correct. Okay. There being nothing else to come before the board. Okay?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One other, one quick thing again, I would like to tell the teachers, thank you, we know it's a work in progress. We do appreciate, like Mr. Kirkpatrick's already expressed it, we appreciate our staff, we appreciate your teachers out here, cuz they're, they're working so hard and we know. This is not gonna be the best scenario for some, gonna be some for others. But it's, it's all, like I say, it's all challenging times and, and we're all in this to, to help y'all and we thank y'all for what you're doing. Uh cuz it, it is tough, but uh thank you for your career choice to be a teacher and to uh teach children, and that's what it's all about, so thank you.
Yeah, one, one last thing, just to add on to, to what Mr. Rogers is saying, is um. Thank you for the communications, for talking to us, or sending us emails and messages and all, all those kinds of things. Even though individually we may not respond to each one, we read them. Uh the reason you don't respond to each one is, I don't have the authority to speak for the board, I can only speak for me, so. Uh but we do read those and, and take those into great consideration, so thanks for your input.
I failed to mention that Mr. Clark couldn't be here this evening because of work requirements and he's, of course, he works at Evergreen. So keep those folks in your prayers, as was mentioned earlier, so Mr. Clark was unable to be here because of the work requirement. So, keep those folks in your prayers, as was mentioned earlier, so Mr. Clark was unable to be here because of the work requirement.
And I, I'd, I'd like to say that I'm very proud of our, our students out there, they've been working hard to keep up with the remote learning. They're going through a lot of difficult times, um, so I know we, we thank the teachers and administration and, and staff for their hard work, but, but our, our students out there are working just as hard, trying to keep up and, and trying to get back in, in the swing of things as well. So, kudos to them.
Meeting adjourned.